Board, it is now five thirty, so this time we're going to call the meeting of February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one to order. City attorneys, is there anything you want to say before we go into closed session?
This is David Prentice appearing for Jason Eperson. I'm Assistant City Attorney. We'll be advising the board, the council today. If the council so desires and moves, the council will go into closed session to discuss three items. Conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine A. Williams versus City of Hollister. Conference with legal counsel pursuant to that same section would be City of Hollister. And also conference with labor negotiator regarding the city clerk.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any comments from the public?
There are no speakers.
Is there a motion to move to closed session from council?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries now. We will move to closed session.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have everyone ready? Who did the pledge last meeting, guys?
Was it you, Honor?
Honor, okay, was Mr. Burns honored? Okay, Mr. Perez, thanks. Okay, thank you very much. This time, we will resume the meeting of February 16th, 2021. Councilmember Perez, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, sir. We are now going to move to, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Velasquez?
Here.
Councilmember Perez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Rizendez?
Present.
Councilmember Spencer?
Present.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
City Manager Miller?
Present.
And City Attorney Michael?
Uh, David, present, appearing for Jason Apperson.
Thank you, David.
Verification agenda posting?
Interim Police Chief Reynoso?
Here.
Thank you. The agenda for the City of Hollister City Council Regular Meeting, uh, February 16th, 2021, was posted on the bulletin board on February 11th, 2020, at 4:03 PM for Government Code Section 549, 54.2. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the art closed session. City Attorney, will you please, uh, report out from closed session?
Yes. Um, the council, uh, was advised, uh, regarding, um, two pending, uh, pieces of litigation. A direction was given, uh, to staff regarding those, uh, two litigation matters, and that was Ruhl and Williams, the City of Hollister. Um, the council also met with the, uh, city clerk regarding, um, her appointment, um, directly under the, uh, city council, and that was discussion. Direction was given, uh, for further, um, investigation.
Thank you, sir. We will now move to the consent agenda. Are there any items council would like to pull? Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is the motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, why don't we, uh, we, we talked about at the last meeting to have the roll call votes because of the Zoom meetings?
That can be done, Mr. Mayor. Do you want me to do that for consent items?
Uh, for any items where we vote, have a vote on, just so we're all clear.
Okay.
I think they found out during their seminars, that's kind of one of the, your requirements or recommendation.
Okay. Do you want me to do that now?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Mayor Velasquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer? Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously to consent items.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to public input. This is a time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and with the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, but the maximum is 30 minutes per subject. Please note, state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Jonathan Casey? Jonathan, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Jonathan Casey. I'm a citizen, uh, resident in Hollister. Um, I am on tonight primarily to listen to the report on the G-PAC expansion. Um, I just wanted to say I support the appointment of Mr. Stevens to the G-PAC.
That we, it's an item on the agenda, so we can't.
I know, I know, but there's no public comment on the report, so that's why I thought I should say something now.
Public comment.
There will be?
Yes.
Every item has public comment, sure.
Okay, great. All right, then I'll hold off. Thank you.
Thank you. Mia Casey? Mia, go ahead.
Hi, sorry, this is Mia Casey. I was commenting on the same thing, so I'll wait till later. Thank you.
Thank you. No more speakers, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. We'll move to item D1, City Manager's Report.
Nothing to report at this time, but I do, uh, warn people that are on Zoom, please watch that you're not camp- campaigning, which then that would be campaigning in the council chambers with any background stuff that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item D2?
No training at this time.
Thank you. We will now go to item F1.
Team is not up. Okay. Okay, Council, so, uh, the next three items are for naming of parks. So, the first one would be F1, with the naming of the park located at Summer Drive in Apricot Lane, uh, is currently unnamed, and staff is requesting approval to name this, uh, park, Apricot Park. But I will say, in going through this, uh, city clerk and myself have looked at some of the processes for naming parks, and one of the steps are to, uh, to get information out to the public, and, um, the city clerk and myself kind of interpret that most of the times when it's times for notification to public, that is through an adjudicated paper. I would say, and, um, all three of these parks, it was done through Facebook, so, um, maybe our concern is, is to kind of step back and redo this process and to advertise these parks and to just make sure that there's no question. With that process, we would also, uh, bring back our, the resolution that's set up the pro- process for naming parks and define that what advertising to the pro- process for naming parks, and define that what advertising to the, to the public really means, and to just make sure that there is no, uh, no confusion in the process that we, that we, and how we name our parks and how, and the processes that we follow. So we don't want to act.
If I may add, that we would like to have the applicants that have currently applied be included in that, just give opportunity to have the public be noticed and receive more additional applications.
Yeah, just in, and concerning that there might have been, uh, people that were unaware that this process even happened. So I, uh, would say almost at this time that we would ask that, uh, you would give us direction to, to change that resolution on the procedure, and then also to, uh, to take these items.
To withdraw, if you could just withdraw these items and bring them back perhaps in April, allowing us time to advertise and receive applications.
Thank you, I was looking for the word withdrawal.
Thank you, sir, is there any questions from council?
Mayor Tim Burns?
You.
Go ahead, uh, Councilmember Burns, I think I heard you first.
Thank you. I absolutely support the city manager's request, and I would just ask that included in there, there be some more specific information about the signage. My presumption was, reading the staff reports that were relatively short, talked about a four thousand dollar per sign cost, and my assumption was it was probably a monument signed, similar to the ones in the parks currently, but I would like more information in reference to that as well.
Okay.
And, and then if, uh, if it's something that city services are going to provide, or if it's something that we're going to go out and ask for a contract, and, and again, if we do go out and ask, uh, contractors to do the work, I would like there to be an emphasis on local contractors if at all possible, and those are my comments, thank you.
Okay.
Sir, Mr. Councilmember Perez? Did you have a comment, I, I thought I heard you also.
Oh, go ahead, Roland.
Councilmember Resendez, sorry.
Thank you so much. Um, I, I support that request as well, but I would also, um, ask if Daisy's going to put together a digital flyer, I always like for her to, to send that to all of us so that we can promote that as well, uh, Mr. City Manager, thank you.
We will do that.
Thank you, and, um, there's another que- I, I agree with your, your comments, City Manager, I think, uh, it'd be helpful for the entire council to be involved in, um, the process of, of how the city parks should be named, and some of their, their recommendations, I think would be very helpful for, for all of us. Councilmember Perez?
The, um... So we're going to, you, you got, we're, we're saying is that we want to get some more applicants and bring this back April first?
I would say it's not more applicants, we just want to make sure that, uh, the public is well known on our process, and then we disclose it, uh, through the, like I say, through a pa- paper like we do mo- all our other public notifications.
So I guess my question would be more like, was that process not followed this time by accident, or?
The process that, uh, that we have on hand was followed, but one of the bi- the bigger, it was just more of a definition of advertising to the public is adverti- just doing it on Facebook or through the parking recommissioners adequate enough compared to other situations where we say, information to public actually means to advertise it in to adjudicated paper.
So we followed the protocol, but we want to kind of change it?
Correct. We want to make sure we define what, what that procedure mean, the definition within the procedure.
What's written is to pub- to notice the pub- to notify the public, so it didn't necessarily say public notice, but we're not sure if just Facebook and having it be placed on an agenda is enough public notice, and having it placed on an agenda, we're not sure if it was placed on the agenda that these are the applications we received and we're going over, or was it placed on the agenda that we're going to be advertising? So there's a difference in that, so we just want to make sure that the public has a chance to apply and know that, that, that the naming of the parks is going to happen. We're not sure that.
Okay.
We just, we just want to be very transparent in, in the process that we do, we don't want to feel, anybody to feel like they were left out.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have any speaker cards?
I have.
For F one, do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion to withdraw this item?
I move that we withdraw Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight.
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote again, I keep forgetting this, sorry, guys.
Mayor Velasquez?
Yes.
Rick Perez? I'm Councilmember Perez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer? Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Thank you, we'll move to item F two?
Uh, for F two, we, we request the same thing.
Any questions from council? Any speaker cards? Is there a motion?
I have one speaker card, Mr. Mayor. Carol Hart? Carol, go ahead. Carol?
Can you, can you hear me?
We can, please go ahead.
Um, I'm actually, uh, twenty twenty-one dash thirty, the naming of the Buzz and Irene Hart Memorial Park.
That'd be the next item?
That's the next item, yes.
Okay. Do we have any other speakers on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion to withdraw?
I move, uh, that we withdraw Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash thirty.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, I'm sorry.
Twenty-nine.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, again, roll call. Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer? Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, we're going to move to item F three.
Same thing as F one and F two, please.
Any comments from council? Do we have any speaker cards?
Carol Hart, please go ahead.
And Christine, can you, oh, reset?
I just have a question now, how do we proceed with our application? Uh, I had this application in process since August of two thousand nineteen, so is there something that, uh, is needed on my part to move forward?
Nothing, nothing will need to be done for the applicants that have already.
Applied.
Okay, so do we know when this will be discussed again?
We're hoping for April, giving us enough time to advertise and enough time for applications to be received.
Okay. Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Robin? Robin Pollard?
I'm here, I'm here, can you hear me?
We can, please go ahead.
Huh, good, thank you. Um, I wanted to, um, you didn't call me early, so I got lost, but, um, as far as naming the parks, there is, there has been a process that I've watched for the last fifteen years where, um, it is advertised, it has in the past been through the newspaper, but we don't have much of a newspaper anymore, and then it went through your Parks Commission, so now are you, um, you're implying that now these, uh, park namings are going to go directly to you, and you're going to skip your Parks Commission completely, um, that's, I know you're not going to answer that, but, um, and the other thing I wanted to ask is that if we are going to be naming parks, um, for people, um, like heritage, basically family heritage sites, um, are these families going to ha- take some ownership in the parks that we are now, um, naming as memorial parks, because we seem to have a lot of parks with, um, people's names, and one of the reasons that I applied for Apricot Park to be called Apricot Park is because that is how the public, that's what the public calls it at this time, and I, instead of confusing it by changing it to some memorial park, let's, um, for clarity, uh, name it what it's being called, um, and if, if and when there is a Apricot Park naming, or the River Parkway Trail opens up, um, it would be, I, Reach and the San Benito Parks Foundation would love to make a big to-do about, uh, Apricot Park and any other naming parks that you do, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more speakers?
We have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, before we make a motion, can I make, um, a comment?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Um, for those that don't know, Robin Pollard is on Reach, they, uh, do, they're, our neighbors here that take care of our, look for and advocate for our parks and trails here locally. I'd suggest that when we do name parks, that we do reach out to them as well, um, and we properly notice it in the newspaper, and then if we can, also notify the three applicants that were received at the same time of when it's going to be on the agenda, um, those would be my suggestions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to withdraw?
I'm prepared to make a motion to withdraw twenty twenty-one dash thirty, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all, um, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Velasquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer? Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Thank you. We are now going to move to item F five.
You mean F four, sir, correct, Mayor?
Oh, F four, yes, sir.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Velasquez and councilmembers, Tina Garza, Recreation Supervisor. And before you, it's item Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty one, it's a resolution of the City Council, the City of Hollister, establishing and creating an arts and cultural commission. Um, our recommendation, staff recommends that City Council adopt a resolution authorizing establishing an arts and cultural commission.
Thank you, is there any questions or comments from council?
Mayor Tim Burns?
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Thank you. Ma'am, um, I totally and completely support this, but I'm, I'm wondering, have you had a lot of expressed interest in this, because as a council, we're struggling currently filling, uh, vacant commission positions, and I would just hate to see this become yet another task that remains partially completed.
I know that, um, I spoke with Jennifer Lane, and Jennifer Lane is with the San Benito County Arts Commission, and she supports our arts and cultural commission, because she thinks it's going to take the City of Hollister to another level, and really focus on the arts and our, our different cultures that we have here in Hollister, so she, um, supports that. I kind of expected her to be, to be here and comment, um, I'm not sure if she's online, but she, we met and we discussed, um, some ideas that we can have with the Arts Commission, um, and then it, in the established rules, we would have, um, five members, and each of those members would be, um, advised by, or the city council would, um, uh, what am I trying, provide our, would recommend those, those, um, the, the constituents or, or your commission, for me, for each council.
Thank you, ma'am, I look forward to your success.
Thanks, I stumbled on that a little bit.
It's all right.
Thank you.
We all do, it's okay. Uh, any other questions from the council members? No other questions, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Elia Salinas? Elia, go ahead.
Hi, this is Elia Salinas, can y'all hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so my only question, I think it's a great idea, I, I'm not, I'm not against it, um, my only question is, is there a cost to the city to establish this commission? And any future events that come out of this commission, would that be something of a cost, and if so, there's any, what, are there any examples that you can give us that would be future events based out of this commission? Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
I mean, the fi- financial impact at, at this time is, is zero dollars, uh, there's nothing that we foresee right now, but, I mean, if it, if it did happen, it would be a probably a very diminished amount currently.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I have none.
Do you have no other speakers?
No.
Thank you. I, I also think it's a, a good idea, I know a lot of cities are doing this, and.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have one more speaker.
Okay.
David Hughboy? David, go ahead.
Okay, unmuted, I'm sorry, I was muted there. Hello, uh, good evening, I am David Hughboy, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm a member of the Public Art Review Committee, and we also known it by the acronym PARC, P-A-R-C, have been actively working to promote arts within the City of Hollister for the last five years. We are excited to see the city take this next step, to be able to continue to work together with a new arts commission and provide public art expertise and advocacy. Hollister has a proud legacy based on a diverse representation of graphic artists, sculptors, muralists, and performing artists from a diverse cultural heritage that has enriched the lives of all ages. Yet the challenges of our art community is severe, marked by rising living costs, lack of affordable housing, lack of venues to share exhibits and performances, and lack of financial leverage to integrate art from within. Art is essential to the well-being of all of us, it is what makes us special, creating a sense of place, and contributes to an identity to where we live, work, and play. Art can also be an economic benefit to our community, in that it promotes Hollister as a place of destination, and a place where others can come, visit from far places to embrace any unique beauty and behold activities that nurtures tourism. The creation of an arts and culture commission is a great opportunity that can support the arts within the context of economic growth through inclusion of future city plans. As an advisory body, the commission can explore ways to support and integrate art and culture within the fabric of our community, with a variety of funding possibilities, be it grants, partnerships, new development, or capital improvement projects. This commission may be essential to support the asset of talent and unique demographic of artists and performers that makes us special, I urge you to support this resolution presented this evening, thank you very much.
Sir.
Thank you. I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Resendez?
Thank you. Um, so, just a little background, I was part of creating, um, the Public Art Review Committee as a, as a citizen, I, um, reached out to Mr. Victor Gomez when he was a vice mayor, and asked him about an arts and culture commission, because I know that he worked for the City of San Jose, and they had one, Santa Cruz had one, when the Public Art Review Committee was, um, was started with the City of Hollister, we, uh, we looked at the bylaws of the, um, Arts and Culture Commission from Santa Cruz, um, I know, I'm glad to hear that the Arts Council is wanting to, um, is definitely supporting this, they essentially have like a Rolodex of local artists, they've put so many years into the arts community, and I think that they'd be more than willing, I, I can't speak for them, but to help out, to help us get commissioners, um, to like, just really make this official, and investment in arts is an investment in our community, it gives a sense of, of that we care about where we live, and that we want to see, um, the arts thrive and to continue to progress. Um, as far as the finances, there's different ways that other cities finance this with, um, and I think that's something that the Arts Commission could probably be one of the first things that they consider, is that there's different initiatives that can help to generate revenue with new development, like you can essentially say like, so much percent of the new development, commercial industrial should be dedicated to the arts, and if not, then they can pay into an adlu, an, um, is it adlu, what is it, I'm sorry, the word for that?
Inlu.
Inlu, an inlu fee. Inlu, an inlu fee, um, and just to keep generating the, the arts. And it's not just, so the Public Arts Review Committee will be sort of like a committee under the Arts and Culture Commission is, is what, how most cities do it. And, um, I'm looking forward to, to not only this passing, but just really transforming the city of Hollister's art, um, and culture representation for the number of years to come. So I would appreciate, um, definitely supporting this. I'm super excited about it and I would love to work with you, Tina, or anybody else, um, in helping to make it come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? I was just going to point out that I, I know I've seen in many other cities, uh, that these commissions are in place and some of the requirements are making sure any new projects are, um, have to have some type of art aspect to the project. Really, you're seeing some pretty neat stuff out there and I, I think you're seeing this all, all over the, well, definitely all over the Bay Area. You know, many, many cities are, are requiring that of any new projects. And I'm sure with all the artists out there, many other ideas will come. It, it'd be nice to see, uh, art all over our city. So it's pretty exciting. And I want to thank you guys for bringing this forward. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we adopt resolution number 2021 dash 31, a resolution of the City Council, the City of Hollister, establishing an arts and culture commission.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Mayor Velasquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer? Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to item F five.
Good evening, uh, uh, Mayor, councilmembers. Um, my name is Henry Gonzalez and I am turn Public Works Director. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval to purchase a second street sweeper. Um, it's, it's badly needed. Uh, we have one currently, um, one driver for it. Um, when that goes down, there's, the last time we had an issue, it was a simple thing as a filter, hydraulic filter, took us seven days to get that filter and another day to get it on. So there was about nine days without sweeping. That's one of the more common calls that we get down at the yard is nobody swept our streets. Um, the nice thing about that is we have GPS on our sweeper, so when they do call, we do have confirmation that we were there.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions from council?
Mayor Tim Burns.
Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gonzalez, is it?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. I do have a few questions for you.
Sure.
So it's my understanding that, um, this $250,000 approximately, we're proposing to pay for this street sweeper and a lease-to-buy program over a, either five or seven year program. Did I get that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And so that's going to be, uh, paid for out of the enterprise fund. And did I see that there's about a $2 million current balance in that fund?
Uh, currently that fund is upside down. It's, it's going to be a, a conversation during our budget process is how do, to, uh, equalize our utility rates through all the different funds. Some are actually, the rates are a little bit higher than they should and some are right, where they should be, and then some are below. So we're trying to equalize those through the, through the budget process this upcoming year.
So from my understanding, when we're saying it's upside down, does that mean it's in a deficit currently?
Correct.
Okay. So if, did I, in reading the staff report, it looked to me like this was going to be paid for through an enterprise fund. I, I don't remember the number, 760 or 670?
It's funds, uh, 670. It's the, uh, Street Sweeping and Storm Drain Management Fund.
Okay. And, and that fund's actually a zero or negative balance?
It's negative balance, correct.
So, so how are we going to pay for this if we don't have any money and we're actually in a deficit?
Uh, it would be through rate changes.
Through rate changes that would be passed on to our, our, our citizens?
Correct.
Thank you. I've, I've, I've got the answers I need. Thank you for your time, sir.
So I, I would, I'd like to add one thing. So currently, the rate that we charge per month is $2.40, um, a house, let's say. Um, that's very low. So that's something that, like, uh, Mr. Miller was talking about, uh, the rate increases, that's something that eventually we'll need to look at.
It's been that rate, rate, I believe, for the last 20 years.
Yes.
Okay. I, I, I do have one follow-up that's, uh, I see that this is, uh, reported to be a sole source contract. Is there a reason why we didn't go out with an RFP or am I confusing that?
No. So this is, so the current, um, sweeper we have and the last two that we've had, we went, we've gone through this company. This is the only company that was, um, willing to do it through a lease program.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from council? A really quick question I would have for you. You did say that it's the only company willing to do it through a lease program. Are there other companies that offer equipment? And what is the price comparison to, on some of those other companies?
I'm not sure.
You're not, you don't have those numbers? The other question I would ask, uh, more towards Brett would be the question, uh, if we can understand what, what caused the numbers to, um, be negative? If we can be clear on, is it, was it buying, purchasing new equipment over the years, labor? What, what's, what's going on in that budget so we can maybe have a better understanding? If we are going to be talking about a increase, we need to understand exactly why that would be and how that came about.
Correct. I mean, I will say, this is more planned during the, uh, future upcoming bu- budget presentations, but over time, th- this fund has also taken on the storm water management, which added, uh, the state's requirements of added additional items that we've had to maintain, which is staffing. Um, and then also, like I said, the, the, the rate, Henry was talking about, the $2.40 for, per rate payer, it is the same rate that's been, uh, was established uh, 20 plus years ago. It might even be more than that. So, um, like anything else, th- things go, go up and the, the labor has gone up, the equipment cost has gone up, but the rate has not gone up over the last 20 years.
I got a question.
So we're just, sorry. So like I said, we're looking at trying to equal out the water fund, the wastewater fund and the, uh, street, uh, street sweeping fund to be more equitable across all three.
Councilmember Perez?
So the, uh, what's the life expectancy of a, that vehicle like this?
If you maintain it, you're looking between five and nine years.
And if we get leased this one, it'll come off the maintenance program, I assume?
We take care of our own maintenance.
Okay. So the, um, so the other ones like pretty much gone? It's-
No, I'm trying to get, jump ahead of the, of that and have them both working, you know, at simultaneously. So we're not replacing or in a panic at the last minute trying to get this taken care of. Because part of the stormwater act, we, the sweeper is a part of that program. We keep the leaves out of the storm drains, the dirt, soil, stuff like that. So, you know, it, it's not just sweeping in front of houses because we want to keep the sidewalk or the streets clean. It's part of what, what we're required to do.
And I guess, I guess the other part that, that comes to my mind is, and it's probably not, I don't know if it's part of this conversation, is I know there's some streets because of parking, no one even gets their street, their gutters cleaned. So is there a plan or a process to put some signage out there so that the gutters can be cleaned with these machines also?
That's definitely something we can sit down and talk about, yes.
Yeah, 'cause, um, um, I think that's part of, I think there's a little bit different forks to this whole thing. Um, I definitely want to keep our water clean. I want to keep our streets clean, but I also want the residents to feel like, even if there is a, probably a price hike coming up, even in me, with me too, um, that we're actually going to be getting service for the money that we're going to be increased instead of just running down the middle of the street.
Correct. I agree. I agree. We, we did, a few years ago, we did put up some signage for street sweeping. We had a numerous amount of calls that people were unhappy with those signs in front of their houses. And I understand that. For years, there was no sign. We put up signs and they were very upset about it. At the same breath, they want their curb and gutter swept. So it's kind of a mixed bag.
Councilmember Spencer, can you speak into your microphone? Check if it's on.
Maybe we could put out, um, a flyer. Like I have a water company that, um, I go through and they send out a calendar and they put on the calendar, they color code it, what day my water will be dropped off. Is there some way we could do that? Just send it out to all residents and, I mean, I know it's, it's a little bit more of an expenditure, but you could do the whole year and send out one calendar for, say, the year of 2022.
Uh, I think that would be a positive move in the right direction, but I think signage is really going to be the best way of doing it, also because it's, it's there. People are seeing it. A lot of people don't see the flyers that we send out. They don't look at our website, things like that. Those are usually the phone calls we get. Well, nobody told me. I don't know. I don't have a computer. I didn't know it was on your website type of a thing. When you put a sign up, you know, somewhere alongside that curb, at one point, somebody sees it.
Mr. Mayor? So we're, we're careful, uh, everyone. Uh, we're talking about the street sweeper. I definitely agree we should have a conversation about, uh, street sweeping days, but that would have to be agendized to have a, a fuller conversation on that. Uh, Councilmember Resendez?
Yes. Um, as far as like the integrity of the streets, I'm just thinking, how does that impact like the, the life capacity of these vehicles? I would imagine like the more better the street is, then the less damage you'd have to the vehicle. Is that something that you can speak to?
Yeah. So on that sweeper, it actually has what's called a flowing head. So it doesn't hit something. It'll actually have springs. It'll come up instead of gets, you know, it won't stop on something that's lower or higher.
Okay. Um, I, I don't, I don't even imagine to be like a professional in this area or whatnot, but I'm just thinking that if we're looking at fixing the roads, which I know we are because we've got money from COG and whatnot to do that, and then we're going to buy a new truck, maybe it would behoove us to wait until after we fix the roads and like revisit this in a year or so. And then at that time, maybe, um, city manager will have allocated the funds in the proper way. That's just a thought.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Elia Salinas? Elia, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon or good evening. Um, so first of all, uh, Councilwoman Honor Spencer, we cannot hear you. You're the only person. So maybe your mic is not on or you need to get closer to it. So I have no idea what your last statement was. I did not hear you. I, it was more of a mumble. So anyway, um, so here's the, here, I, I know that, uh, Mayor, what I guess I'm going to request is that this, that's the, uh, on a future agenda, we should think about, uh, this, the, about signs. And the signs are in public property. They're not in the homeowner's property. So, sorry, tough on the, tough on the public or the homeowner. We need those signs. But I would like to bring to the, um, on a future item is, um, uh, revenue, bringing revenue with, based on that. I mean, I got a ticket in LA because I was, it was a Monday and it was street sweeper day. So maybe we should consider finding people who are not moving their cars out of there. I, I know I'm the one who's totally against charging people because we're in an economic crisis and, but it is, it, you know, if it's been 20 years or more than 20 years and the price has been increased, this is not like ecology that every three months they're getting an increase. Sorry, that's just my opinion. Um, but I, I would like to see something, uh, brought back in the future with regards to signage and, and maybe some type of fines for street sweepers. Uh, it is our duty to get those cars out of the way so that don't, you know, then you've got, you know, corners clogged up and you've got to close the streets and it happens, it happens every year. Y'all know that. Uh, and it costs money. Uh, once there's a backup and you've got to go in there and you've got to clean it up. So, um, thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it.
Is there any other speakers?
I have no speaker cards or no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, one other question. I thought we had a backup sweeper to, uh, back us up. We have, I've never seen an older one out there. Is that one not here anymore or?
That is correct. We no longer have it.
So we only have the one sweeper now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much clarifying that. Okay. Is there a motion from the council? Seeing there's no motion, this, uh, lack of motion, this item dies. Thank you very much. We'll move to item F six.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for F six, the, we are requesting that council consider adopting of a policy establishing a citizen oversight committee as provided by the City Municipal Codes for expenditures. I, I, I could stop. Expenditures of measure, measure W, the transaction, sales and use tax. In the past, we've had a oversight board for measure, I'm going to try to remember all the measure, measure T, measure E, and now, uh, measure W. And what we would request that they at least meet once a year to, uh, discuss the expenditures that were spent on measure W funds.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from council? Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 2021 dash 33.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a motion and a second? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote. I'll get the hang of this.
Mayor Velasquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer? Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to item F seven.
Yes, Mayor. Staff requests that you move, actually move G six forward for a more seamless presentation of, of the first quarter budget presentation and then followed by F seven, which would be the second quarter.
So you would like to move G six before the F seven?
Correct.
Discussion is, would that be all right with the council?
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay, we'll go to move to G six first.
One second, we'll get the presentation up. Also before Cecilia, uh, starts her presentation, unless it was a glaring question for the first quarter, we almost kind of asked, wait till the second quarter presentation because it might, your, your question might sort out or it might just, uh, be a repeat.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, City Council. My name is Cecilia Rodriguez. I will be presenting to you the, um, first quarter budget status report for fiscal year 2021. For our fund revenues, we mostly focus on our general fund with 25% year completed, leading the first quarter is licenses and permits with 50% um, revenue received. Our general fund expenditures are at 27%. Um, engineering expenses are leading, um, which is under review. This may be due to missed allocations of projects. Mostly all of our, um, veterans' building expenses are paid at the beginning of each year or fiscal year. I mean, I'm sorry, at the beginning of each quarter or fiscal year. And, uh, most of the one-time expenses have been accounted for. Areas of council concern, um, again, engineering project allocation is under review as well as the, um, fire department's overtime. And like Brett mentioned, this will be additionally explained in the second quarter review. Our cost per fire station, station one is leading with 1 million for regular operations and 89,000 in overtime. And this is due to administration or all the administration is done at fire station one. We continue to make improvements. Eighty, sorry, 8 million in fire training facility. The 2 million in FAA improvements, 181,000 in road improvements and 22,000, 22,600 in other improvements. This concludes the first quarter budget status report for our fiscal year 2021. Do you have any questions, concerns or direction?
We'll ask council. I know there was a recommendation to wait till after F seven, but we need to ask, is there any questions now from council? Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor, and no speaker cards.
We'll go ahead and move now to F seven.
Okay. Can I get the clicker from you? Yeah. Can you move to the second presentation? Thank you, Cecilia.
Thank you.
Tina, you want to see, I don't know if somebody's at the front door. Oh, somebody's looking at it. Never mind, Tina. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just like, we're, sorry, I'm working with the clicker. Yeah, just go ahead. Can you advance? Sorry. Okay. So like the first quarter, the revenues are coming in higher than projected. We're at 50% of the year. So the one area that we want to kind of point out is sales tax, which is in, under taxes, and then it's also under other revenue, which is the measure, measure W gets transferred in to that area. So everybody with COVID, everybody is, across the state is actually on the negative side with sales tax. We are one of the unique places where we're up about 16% on our sales tax from last year. So everybody has been doing their part by promoting shop local and it's been showing off. So I really wanted to congratulate everybody that has done their part by helping be a unique area by having, like I say, increase in their sales tax compared to last year. I believe for this last quarter, the state was down 2%, Central Coast area was down, I believe about 4%. And like I say, we were up 16%. So we hope we, we continue that trend. It helps in the other areas, like franchise fees that are down, our trans occupancy taxes are down and charges for services are down. But overall, we are up 56% and we're, and that's, we're, we're at 56% of revenue that, that has helped us out. So expenditures, so the same thing as the first quarter, we're up a little bit on our expenditures too. Main area is non, non-department, but that is because all our one-time expenditures are done and paid in the first quarter. So that does make sense that it is higher. As Cecilia said, for veterans building, they're at 73% because we pay a quarter in an advance so that they have funds on hand to take care of any expenditures that they need. But we're feeling really good. Another area that is high right now is the planning division, but that is the, sorry, let me make sure I'm saying that right. Planning, but that is because the, the fees that are coming in from building is, we pay out a consultant, so that does make sense that their fees are gone up because our revenue for building has come in, come in higher than expected. So areas concerned is the engineering salary allocation to projects. So usually when we budgeted, we allocate so much for, that they'll be working on a storm drain or water project. And we're still looking at that, if those projects are really coming to fruition or not, and if we need to look at allocating, changing their allocations for the future. Another area of concern is the fire department overtime. Right now, they're at 200% of the budget. However, if you want to look at, they have being reimbursed for their strike teams, about 433,000. So if we back that out with what they've spent so far, that puts them roughly about 600,000, which would be the same as last year. But it is a concern because if that extrapolates out to the rest of the year, it could be a big concern. But let me say, a lot of the overtime for right now, about 433,000 of it was for strike teams. So we have been then asked for how to, what the allocation for, for fire station is. Like Cecilia said, the station number one is the majority of it because that is the administrative office. So their cost for about 1.89 million. Station number two, which is in Hollister, is, is 1 million. Same with really, if you want to round, station three and four are about the same. And roughly the overtime is also the same, pretty much proportionate to all four stations where station one might be a bit higher because that is where they're, say, the B C or some of the management staff come out of. So things that would have happened so far up to second quarter, like Cecilia said, with $2 million in FAA grants, which helped out the airport. We did another 100, almost 150,000 in park improvements, 400,000 on road improvements and another 86,000 on other improvements. So what's that? Oh, sorry. This is a mid-year part, so we do ask for council to approve the additional appropriations. Some of the, we've had that were unanticipated was unemployment insurance for the non-department. COVID-related expenditures for, and not, it wasn't for me, sorry, for the city manager department. Got to watch how I put those wording, words in. Personnel, personnel costs under engineering. We did have some computer upgrades for finance and animal control for their software. Contract services for planning, like I said, for the building inspections for the revenue that was brought in. Capital improvements for the dog park that it should be done hopefully very soon. Henry assures me. And the fire training facility. And then also we had some, and the other non-general fund, which was FAA Transportation Development Act Fund, CBG funds, we did not budget for FEMA and CARES Act at the beginning of this fiscal year. We didn't, weren't hoping that we had as many expenditures that we did. Traffic impact, jail juvenile hall fees that we need to transfer back over to the county for their, for our share or impact fees that we collect on their behalf, storm drain impact and community facilities, district number four. So now, do you have any questions? I kind of went through that fairly quickly.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council?
Mayor Timber.
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, sir. City Manager Miller, can you, I don't know if this is the place or the time, but can you speak to, I, I think I have three questions or comments, maybe there are a combination there. First of all, is, is the fire department overtime overrun? Have I heard you correctly? That's like 600,000 dollars? Is that, is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. And, and did we attribute an actual cause? For example, are we fully staffed? Is it because of people calling in sick? Is it COVID related and filling those positions? Because I know that they have minimum staffing requirements. And so I'm just, I, I hear your concern. I understand it. And, and I'm just, I'm looking for potential fixes. And so what the budget report really doesn't tell us about, and it's not designed or intended to, is what's the story behind the number?
I would say fire department has been monitoring their overtime. Like I say, of that million dollars that they spent, 430 was for strike teams. So that we actually get reimbursed higher than, than what we spend in time. We get reimbursed for our equipment. So that, that's the majority of it. With COVID, that has been an issue that we've had staff go out or had to be quarantined depending on, on calls that they've gone in. So that's had a higher than normal effect this year. And then we, we have had turnover in the department, so that has affect. There's overtime while we're, we're filling positions. And then we've had a couple individuals that have been out on medical leave.
So, so did I hear you say that 600,000 dollars so far for this fiscal year? And did I hear you say 600,000 for the previous year as well?
Yeah, correct. Well, sorry. At this period, at, at the second quarter of last year, we, we had spent 600,000 as a comparison.
Okay. And so the number seemed consistent or relatively consistent to me. And two years ago, of course, we didn't have COVID. And so I'm wondering if it would make more sense if, if we just arrive at a 600,000 dollar number. I, I don't know what total comp for a firefighter is, but maybe it would make more sense to hire more firefighters and we could then offset the sick leave. And, and I'm not asking for a comment. I'm just, I guess I'm talking out loud. And so, but you know, in, in my life, typically if it's predictable, it's usually preventable. And it seems like there is a pattern here. And so I think we need to look deeper in regards to that. And so.
I'll answer your question kind of more with a common or comments that have been in past council members. Is the concern is we've given, that was the solution to have more firefighters would bring down the overtime. But it, that has not, that statement has not come true yet.
Okay, fair enough. And so we are currently in the second half of the second year of the two-year budget. Is that correct?
No, we are now going to single-year budgets.
Okay, so this, we're, we're currently on the second half of a one-year budget, anticipating doing a one-year budget again.
Correct.
And so in the past, the city did a two-year budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, we did a two-year budget when we finally kind of got where there was a lot of more consistency. And luckily, we didn't do, we did a one-year budget this year because of COVID and we, and the, unanticipated what the future would be. This is definitely not a time when you do two-year budgets, when we, we're yo-yoing with costs or revenues and it's very unpredictable.
Thank you for your clarification, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Sure. Okay. So a little history. I've been on the council for two years. I think I sat in the chambers as a constituent for two, three, four years before that. And it was the same thing every year, year after year, Brett. And I remember that Mr. Richmond was pretty passionate about, about this. But I think Mr. Burns brings up some good points. I'd like to see probably a history of what we've done or what our numbers have been, and then what have we done? And we need to, we need to find out what's going on. I don't, I don't understand how this is acceptable in a, in a public industry and it wouldn't definitely be acceptable in a private industry. It's just been the same thing year after year. So I think we really, this needs to be addressed and, and it needs to be addressed like five years ago. The other question is the strike team reimbursement. Was that for like the fires and stuff, the California fires, Brett?
Correct. Yeah, all the major fires that were, that were all over the news, we were at probably 75% of them.
So we can't, I mean, if we didn't have those fires, we wouldn't have that money. So we can't use that money to justify the, the lowering of the, of the overtime, right? And it's, and I don't pretend to know what's, what's causing it. I really don't. So I think I need a little bit of a more clear picture, but that would have gone up over to a million dollars, I think. So I think that we need to take a look at this and look at it in a very detailed way. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Hey, do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards and no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hold on one second. One hand raised. Elia Salinas?
So I have one question. Do we get, does the city get reimbursed for sending firefighters to those fires through some kind of a FEMA, FEMA grants? That's just my question. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, we do get reimbursed. Like I said, the 433,000 is what will, what we will be reimbursed for those fires for this last two quarters.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just wanted to say great job to everyone. Being up 16% in sales taxes. Yeah. It's a big deal. It's a really big deal. And I know all of you have been really pushing, promoting people to shop locally and all our residents have been doing a good job with it. As the city manager pointed out, most communities are lower 5% plus in their revenues from their sales tax. So we are clearly doing something unique here and it's impressive that our community came together. And again, all, everyone, every one of you that have been out there really promoting people to shop local has, has made a big difference. So thank, thank you. Thank you, everyone. With that, is there a motion? You guys all want this budget?
I'm getting kind of like, so we're asking for a motion to, to approve the supplemental appropriations for the mid-year budget.
Yes, this is item seven now.
I make a motion that we accept resolution number 2021 dash 34 as stated.
I second.
There's a motion and it's second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Velasquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer? Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I also like to thank Cecilia for putting staff in their uncomfort zone by having them get used to public speaking.
The number one fear out there, isn't there? So thank you, Cecilia. We'll move to item G one. Reports from city council members regarding their committees. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I did attend the W R A S B C committee meeting on 24/21. I'm learning acronyms by the day. And so for those of you that don't know, it's W R A S B C. Stands for Water Resource Association, San Benito County. It's a committee. And I had the distinct pleasure of being appointed as the committee chair. And I would like to thank the program manager, Sean Novick, for his patience and understanding with me and helping me struggle through technology through the Zoom meeting that we had. And one thing I did want to remind people of, that it's my understanding that if you have a toilet that is pre-1992, they have toilet replacements free of cost to you. And so please go get a free toilet if you have a need and it's a pre-1992 toilet. And Mayor, that would complete my report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Spencer?
I met with the Paharo River Bike Committee. I'm not a voting member, but I did meet with them last week and it's very interesting, some of the projects that will be coming to central California in the ways of a new dam and some other flood concerns, especially for San Benito County.
Thank you. Councilmember Perez?
Yeah, I met with Ambig. And really, I'm learning a lot. But nothing to report as of yet.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Resendez?
Thank you. I had no committee meetings. I've got nothing to report.
I had no committee meetings either. We will now move to item G two. Informational reports from city council members. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, and I'm not clear that this is the place or the time, but I'm going to go there. And if it's not, I will accept that. I was just curious if the city manager could provide us with an update on the conversation regarding the SNPs project that we approved. I did read in the local online newspaper that the county routinely gives $5,000 and that the commissioners may in fact donate some money from county funds that they have. And so if, if $5,000 is their contribution.
And so if if five thousand dollars is their contribution, so be it. But if it is their only contribution, then I'm, in all candor, I'm a little disappointed. And I'm hoping that when we do these, this this work, that we track city from county. I understand animals don't know the difference between whether they're in the city or the county, and I appreciate that. And so, but I would like to have a clear record for next year because I strongly support this this mission that they've put together. But I also think that there should be an equal contribution based on the volume of work done in the city versus a county. And that would conclude my comments, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, do you mind if I comment real quick on that one? Yes, that is, what you read is the amount that the county has given. And then there are a couple of different board supervisors have contributed from their own pool of funds within their budget. And I forget the total amount that the individuals did, but that was the amount that the county contributed.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Spencer?
Actually, along those lines, I do need to ask the city manager some, something I need to understand. Do we give out conditional use permits, and what is the process?
You know what, the best, I mean, I can answer it, Abraham does such a better job, I'll have Abraham. The easy, easy answer is yes, we do, but the different situations, Abraham will handle that.
Okay.
Thank you, City Manager Miller, and thank you. We do issue conditional use permits in the city of Hollister. It's in our City of Hollister Regulations, Chapter seventeen, or Zoning Ordinance. And the Planning Commission of the City of Hollister is who is, has the authority to issue conditional use permits. Of course, there's always an appeal period if whether the applicant or members of the public want to appeal the decision of the Planning Commission. It can come then to the city council as as an appeal. But a conditional use permit, it really depends, usually it's it's, usually it's requested when the primary use of a of a of a land use is is not primary. Like, for example, in the industrial zoning district, primary uses are manufacturing, warehouse uses, any type of use that is is consistent with industrial la- land uses. Commercial uses actually can also go there, but those are secondary, and they need a conditional use permit to be able to be reviewed a little bit more in in thorough. And and the Planning Commission will then make a an actual decision whether or not it meets that requirement.
Okay, I don't think my quick, okay, so let's just say, somebody wants to get a conditional, a resident wants to get a conditional use permit to run a business out of their home. Is that something that we do do?
We do, absolutely.
We do, so they, we've done this for how many years?
So a conditional use permit for a business, we've done it for for various years. At least it it's been in the process since two thousand and nine was the last kind of overhaul that we did in the zoning. But a conditional use, because the city is, allows to have a home-based business, it's a home, home occupation. And usually, basically, the regulations are that the business has to be in a way where really the neighbors can really even know that a business is being ran. For example, if somebody wants to do, have their contractor's license, they can get a home occupation. Somebody wants to run a landscaping business, they can get a home occupation. And then those uses that are a little bit more intense, like if somebody wants to have a one hair, one-chair barber salon, they can get, they can get a conditional use permit through the Planning Commission. If somebody wants to do a a home-based business to like grind coffee beans and sell little bags now of 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 coffee beans, they, that's a little bit more intense. And we would allow for that through a home, through a conditional use permit, that's correct.
Okay, and let's, let's go with the that.
For a second, guys, let me hang out for a second. There are so many very, so many different businesses that can qualify and can't qualify. It really is a long, complicated, it shouldn't have to be complicated. Abraham is available, I think they can make a phone call, Councilmember Spencer, if you have somebody that has some questions, you call him directly to really get a better understanding, because it really should probably spend thirty minutes plus with whoever you're, you want to talk with or needs to talk to him. But that should be a discussion during the normal business hours to get a better understanding. Then obviously, he can email them any paperwork that they might need so they can understand it. Because it is gonna be a long conversation, and unfortunately, not every business does qualify for the conditional use at home. And I think it's gonna be important to make sure whoever is asked that question really understands the the rules.
Um, I, I don't understand, because I wasn't, I was asking for information for myself. Um, I thought that's what these meetings are about.
Maybe make that phone call during the business hours and talk to him directly. And if you have any items that the public would like to know that you want to alert them to during this session, you're more than welcome to do that. Okay? Do you have any, any other announcements? No? Councilmember Perez?
Yes. I'd like, I'd like to give a shout out to the Hollister Rec Department and all their special little workers behind the scenes, including the Key Club, the Girl Scouts, the staff of the city rec department, and part of the public works for doing the Cupid. Help me out, Tina.
Cupid Express.
Cupid Express, yes. Turned out to be a great success, seen a lot of residents that were excited to receive these packages. And I'm glad it's over. But it's, yeah, it was really fun participating with you guys. I think you guys are doing a great job, especially during this time of COVID, to bring smiles and a laugh to people. And I'd like to thank the city for participating in which it's such a great success. And from my understanding, it hasn't happened for a while, but it was, the numbers were pretty really good. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Resendez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to piggyback off of what Mr. Councilmember Burns said about the SNPUs. Well, two things, Brett, number one, sometimes these things go out and then they're never followed up on, or we don't hear back from them. So I think we need to look at like formally finding a process to do that, right, like to follow up. The other thing is, I remember, and I don't know if you remember Councilwoman Spencer or not, I thought David Westrick at the time had said that the county was going to give us a set amount of dollars during those conversations. I could have sworn that he said it. So I'm disappointed too, I really am. But he just, by having him have that conversation, it brought up my opinion about that. So the other thing is, oh, I went over to Allendale Project over the weekend. Allendale, I'm sorry, Allendale Development over the weekend. And then.
Animals don't like you bringing up SNP in front of them.
Gotta work out with the SNPUs.
Yeah, you can see I'm personally invested in the SNPUs and its mission, for sure. So one thing was, I wanted to know what the timeline was, I see that they are working on it, Brett, and I probably should have asked before this on the railroad. I get a lot of inquiries about that road. So I don't know, do you have any information for us on that or the public?
Yeah, I believe it's at the end of the month, I'm looking at, yeah, Abraham gives me the thumbs up, yeah, end of the month, it's supposed to be done.
Jeez, okay, let's get it done. And then the roads. I know that we had a lot of complications with the roads, and I think that, and then I talked to Ms. Pollard from Reach, and she was complaining, or she was bringing up some some concerns, I would say, about the trails and the parks over there, that they kind of dead end. So I promised her I would go back out there and take a look at them, and I did. And I just think that before we issue any permits, Abraham, we really need to make sure that these roads and that these trails and these parks are gonna benefit the community and that they're done, that they're done in full circle, like they're complete. I think some of the trails that Ms. Pollard brought up went off like into a dead end or something, or didn't come around. So I got to go out there and see that. I think in particular by that water retention pond, it was like fenced off, but now the public, like, they just take it upon themselves to open that fence and to keep that trail going, so we have to plan better, I think, out there. Sorry, I feel like I went on a rant, and my dog totally threw me off, but I think that's it, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Couple of things I wanted to announce. I want to, a new hotel, if all of you don't know, is being built there across from the existing hotel. It is gonna be a Holiday Inn Express, they are now in the process of doing some of the groundwork. They will be having a groundbreaking ceremony next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, at twelve forty-five. Of course, all of you are invited to be there to participate, sticking those shovels into the ground. It's really exciting, it's a a big project, and a great success that's happening there on Gateway with the hotels coming to the to the area. So the program we had instituted a, or implemented a few years back, it really paid off, and we're gonna hopefully see more hotels coming. So everyone, if you can all be there, council members, you can be there to, as I said, put the shovels in the ground. That would be greatly appreciated by the owners, that they own the Fairfield right across the street. So that's good, exciting news. And again, that's gonna be Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, at twelve forty-five in the afternoon. The other thing I was gonna ask city manager, and wanted to actually ask all of you council members, if you're ready, if you feel up to the point of having a town hall meeting with the public so we can kind of get a a feel for what they're looking for from us in the community. I know it's still kind of early, you guys have just been here for a couple of months, but I'm thinking sometime, maybe in April, if you guys are are ready for that, and we can let the public inform us on what what they want us to be focused on. I think it's really helpful, it's been a great success in the past, and I I look forward to your comments on that in the future. No set date, really just wanted to bring it up to you guys and see if we can go from there. The conversations has was brought in with the SNPUs. I'm, I still have faith in the county that they'll come through with some help with the funding. But it was made pretty clear from the council that if funding was not gonna be coming through from the county that we would be starting to restrict the activities to residents of the city of Hollister. So hopefully, we can make a phone call again and get more partition, participation from the county, because it is a great program, has been a major success, and I would hate to see it slow down over some district lines. So if we can do that, that'd be very helpful.
Will do.
I'm sorry, did somebody say something?
Sorry, that was me, Mayor. I will follow up on that part.
Yes, go ahead, your turn.
So I'll report that I'll follow up on that, on the SNPUs and getting some fu- funding for the, from the county, and that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney?
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Chief?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I just wanted to report that on Friday, last Friday, we were able to swear in Rosie Petano as our newest lieutenant. Rosie is a twenty-year veteran with the Hollister Police Department, she's basically done it all. She's been FTO, she's been a FTO coordinator, she's been a senior officer, sergeant, detective sergeant. She's helped out, she's been a PIO before, she's helped with the amp control. She's basically done it all, she's the first woman in the Hollister Police Department history to 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 become an administrator and the first Latina to do that as well. So I wanted to share that great news. We're gonna be putting out a video of sorts, possibly tomorrow, commemorating the event. But I wanted to share that with you today, so it's a, we're really proud to have her as part of our team now.
Excellent.
And in regards to the SNPUs, you were talking about the SNPUs, there were five events in the previous contract where their agreement was for them to do five shelter pets, spay ter, five shelter pets. And that didn't happen for five events, so we're hoping to meet with them soon so that this new contract, there's no, there's no miscommunication. And that hopefully, it's an event for the public, but it's also an event for the, that can help shelter pets, the shelter animals so they can find, make it easier for them to find a home in our community as well. But that's all I have to report.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, Councilmember Burns, I think you are aware that we have appointed and lost your D four Parks and Rec Commissioner. So I don't know what, if, maybe we could repost again on on Facebook. I know that we are giving everyone until, I think it was last Friday, to apply. I still have received no applica- no additional applications for, well, Parks and Rec we thought was done, so we didn't, we weren't really, we haven't received any of those. So would you like me to re-advertise or and repost on Facebook? We really need airport commissioners, and I think everybody does, although I kind of heard from Councilmember Spencer. This is gonna come back on on Mar- March first. So I think at that time, I think Councilmember Spencer has stated that she'd like to steal the one application that we did have for the airport for her district, because there was none for her district. And I don't know what else to do, but just giving you an update that we're still pretty slim pickings there.
I'd like to clarify, we we do not steal here at this city.
Oh, sorry, well.
She would like to.
It it was.
Move them to a new location.
District two, but we already have a district two. Yes, we don't steal. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move to G three, the general plan commission, vice recommission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like the city council to consider appointing the Planning Commissioner's recommendation to the GPAC committee, which was Roxanne Stevens. And then we had one additional seat, which was for the public participant. And at the time that we received applications, we received four applications. Of the four, only one was eligible, and after speaking to him a few weeks ago, he has declined to take it at this time. So I would like to get council consensus and direction to go ahead and advertise for the one public member and appoint the Planning Commission's recommendation for the other planning commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, is there any questions from council?
I guess I do have a question.
Council, or Vice Mayor Resendez?
Thank you, I was just wondering, well, you stated why one was applicable, but why were the others not applicable, or what happened with those?
One was Marty Richmond, one was hired by the city in the planning department, and one moved out of state.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burns, I see you had a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. City Clerk, I'm wondering, I absolutely support, I guess I should start with appointing the recommended person, her name escapes me at the moment, but Roxanne Stevens. Having said that, however, I'm wondering why we centered or focused on only one person representing the community. I would, I for one would rather see there be e- either one from each council district, although I'm sensing that may be a challenge. But I'd at least like to see that that opportunity existed. And whether it be from each council district, or maybe increase one to three at large. I I just think one is not enough, and I would like to see more community participation. And I'll defer any other comments to to follow up, if I may, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Burns, and I think Abraham may help me in this, but when the original resolution was written up for the GPAC committee, it stated that there would be five members, and that there would be two from the council, two from the Planning Commission, and one member of the public. That's why there's five, just so you know, yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Perez, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, I, so, Ford, so GPAC. So I'm, so back to the Planning Commission. So we have other commissioners in, or other applicants in District One, there seems to be an overabundance. be an overabundance. Would that be able to apply for the GPAC, wouldn't it? I mean, well, okay, so what I'm thinking is, I, I agree with Mr. Burns, uh, councilman Burns. I, I, I'd like to see more public input with that, actually talking to, um, what was his name, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Um, Early?
Yes, and, and he said, um, he's, I'm not gonna sit, well, anyways, I was asking him if it, basically, if we get too many people, is it too complicated and too, too much? And from our conversation, he said that seven is a good number. Um, I, I kinda agree, I, I agree with Mr. Burns, and I also have extra applicants on my, um, general, on my planning commission, um, and I'm this close to making a decision as far our announcement is to who's gonna be taking, um, who's gonna be, um, my planning commissioner for District 1, but I have extra peop-
Oh, I hope you make those appointments on March 1st, 'cause I'll bring it back then. And any, like, like with Tim, anyone who's applied for any other commission, as long as they fill out an application prior to your appointment date, they are welcome to, to serve on that commission as well.
Okay.
But the only reason I would like to advertise is to be fair and to open it up to anyone new who may not have been aware that it was...
Okay.
'Cause we didn't have the opening prior, so...
Yeah, now, Mayor, if you don't mind, uh...
Oh, yes, sir.
I'd like to echo, uh, the city clerk, yeah, the, the five, everybody kinda asked why we came up with five. Past council members did choose to have it to be two council members, two planning commissioners, and a member of, of the public, so, um, you know, that's, if you want, wanna blame anybody or anything like that, it would've been the past council to, that, who set that up.
So, I do have a, a couple of comments. I, I spoke with Mr. Early today, uh, explained that the one, we had the one citizen that had applied before that had wanted to be involved, but for different reasons, he was not, uh, approved by the council, so we have none. So, I, I pointed that out to him and I asked a question to him that, at this point in the process, is it too late to bring in additional members? And his, his comment was, no, it's not too late, and if we can get them in before, I think he said March 5th, so they could be ready for the next meeting. His comment, as, uh, councilman Perez pointed out, was, the, the good number would be about seven, so you would have three citizens at large, um, throughout the community, throughout the city, that could be participating. If we could find that many, then he recommended to, um, filter through the applicants, make sure that they're, they are, um, they're citizens and they're not part of a, um, how do we say this, not part of a development group or, um, third-party group like that, but they're just citizens that reside here and wanna see, uh, be part of this committee. So, I think that's good news. If we can, if we agree that we wanna go for, uh, three more, or three citizens at large, we can do that, but the timeline would be to try to get that done by March 5th and get that back to the council to review the applications and then go from there. And tonight, work with the, uh, the other commissioner from the, from the planning commission.
Advertising-wise, the soonest I could get it in the newspaper, 'cause I messed up the last time with the commissioners, I'm not gonna do that again, the soonest I can get it in the newspaper would be, I'd have to submit it this Friday, the 19th, to be advertised in the newspaper on the 26th. Then, we would have to allow time for, for applicants, so we wouldn't make the March 1st deadline, because it wouldn't be-
March 5th.
March 5th. I think we, what we probably could do, if we have to have a special meeting, if we needed some more time, we could probably still do that. I believe the next GPAC meeting is on March 20th or 23rd. I thought I saw, um, one of the participants here, I think Mr. Early was on, maybe he can raise his hand, I see his hand raised, maybe he can speak and...
So, if we were to allow for applicants to apply by, say, the 5th, giving them a week to apply, I could get it on the 16th unless we did a special meeting, if that would work for you to ratify those appointments.
Let's hear, if we can, uh, Mr. Early is on, I see his name up here, if we can ask him and get some recommendations from him, that would be helpful.
Mr. Early, please go ahead.
Good evening, this is David Early. Good evening, this is David Early, and I'm the city's consultant for the general plan. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir, thank you for being on.
You're welcome. Um, so I just wanted to say that if, I thought the council meeting was on the 15th of March, but, um, the regularly scheduled meeting on either March 15th or 16th for council action would be perfectly fine. And if the, um, my idea had been that the, um, applications would be due on March 5th, but if that's too soon, given the newspaper deadline, it's certainly fine to extend that a little longer, and I would leave it up to the city clerk to follow whatever process is appropriate, to go from the close of that period to vet the names and get the, allow the council to make, uh, an appointment of three members at the March 15th or 16th meeting. Our first GPAC meeting of the next series will be on March 23rd. I do wanna make sure that the council members, Resendez and, and, um, Mayor, um, Mayor Ignacio, as well as the two planning commissioners have those dates already, and there will be five meetings starting on March 23rd, one a week, and so this is a very important period, and it would be great to have those three public members seated, um, in time for the March 23rd meeting.
Thank you, sir. Is there any, Mr. Early, while he's on, from council members? Thank you. You had a con-
I'll continue just to listen in, if you, if you need me, but I'll, um, you can, uh, you can mute me again for now and then call on me if you need me.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your help.
Mayor, this is city manager. Something I would recommend is probably then we need to bring back the resolution that set up the original GPAC and rescind that resolution and, uh, adopt a new one saying, uh, I'm assuming it would be the two council members, two, uh, planning commissioners, and three public members in.
Correct.
Okay, we can bring that forward.
Bring that back for the March meeting, so we're ready for that, and then go through the applications in time for the, uh, following meeting, GPAC meeting. Does that work for the rest of the council members?
Yes.
Does? Okay.
I'm-
Thank you. Is there, uh, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mia Casey. Mia, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, uh, council members, this is Mia Casey, I'm a Hollister resident, and I just had a brief comment about the general plan committee appointments. In fact, I'm really, really happy to hear the discussion about adding, uh, more public. Uh, I think it's really important, I've attended the GPAC meeting so far, and it's, the general plan's so important to our city's future, and it really is a community vision, so having more members from the public on the committee is, is a great idea, and it's, um, I, I hope that you can get more, um, applicants. And also, I just wanted to also urge that it's more widely advertised. I was really happy to see the other commissioner appointments being circulated out on, on Facebook, on social media, and I hope that you'll do the same for, uh, for this application as well, and not just run it in the freelance, 'cause not everybody sees that. So, um, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Jonathan Casey?
Hi, good evening, coun-, um, council members, uh, this is John Casey. Yeah, I would also like to applaud the expansion of the, of the GPAC. Um, I am fine with the appointment of the, uh, planning commission, hopefully that can happen tonight so she can get to work. Um, and then, the expansion from, um, to the seven members with three from the public, I, I really appreciate that, and I think, um, it'll help, uh, for the planning and adoption of the, um, of the planning document for, for many years to come. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Elias Salinas?
Hi, good evening, Elias Salinas, and I'd like to thank council members Burn and Perez for, uh, bringing up and agreeing that, that we should add more, uh, public input, and I appreciate Mayor, uh, Velazquez, that you agree with that, because I think this allows for more transparency. Uh, we need to have, uh, different viewpoints. I've expressed before that I believe that, as you have right now, um, you have two council members that tend to agree on one subject with regards to the general plan, is that you wanna slow growth, or actually, maybe even, in my opinion, have no growth for quite some time, because you'd like more of the roads fixed before you see more housing here. So, I appreciate you asking for, uh, public input with different, uh, opinions from different people in, in our community, and I'm sure that there's plenty of people out there, at least I hope there are, that wanna actually get involved. Uh, if you're gonna bring it back for, uh, is it a new resolution, or the question to the city manager, is, would this be a new resolution, or would be an amendment to change it from the five to seven? And if so, um, it, do we have to, is there a waiting period, so now it, it's gonna not meet that deadline for, for the March, uh, meeting? Uh, because you have to bring it back, does it have to be read twice, and, you know, so that's two different council meetings? How does that, how does that work?
No. To go about- Go ahead, Christine. Elliot, Elliot, it's a resolution, so we could bring that back March 1st, and then be prepared on the 15th. Um, Mr. Early was correct, that it is the 15th for ratification for the applications that were received by the 5th. So, the change would already be in place prior to us appointing.
Okay, so the only, the only change would be the fact, from going from five to seven and nothing else, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council mem-, I mean, Carol Lenore.
That was funny, Christine. Hey, uh, Carol Lenore, Hollister, resident of Hollister. I wanna thank also council member Burns and council member Perez, and I already know that, uh, councilwoman Spencer, uh, I already know how she feels on this issue, so she didn't really have to speak for me, but, uh, yeah, good, good call there, uh, it's amazing what you can do when you don't have a tight vote. So, I'm really appreciative to hear the mayor go along with adding a few more people, as we've been trying to get him to do for the last year. So, thank you so much for that. I do wanna know, though, when the applicants do come up for consideration, that will be a, a simple majority of council to appoint that public member, uh, to the, to the, uh, GPAC committee, and maybe I'd like a little confirmation of that. Uh, but again, I, I think you're, you're gonna have much better, uh, uh, view of the city, uh, with the seven, uh, rather than the three we've been doing with. Uh, so thank you, uh, for bringing that forward, and I look forward to listening in on, uh, some of those meetings. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Carol. Mr. Early? David Early? David, did you wanna speak?
I mean, no, he was just coming back, we had any questions for him.
Oh, okay. Eva Kelly?
Um, I could quickly say, I, I did wanna mention two other items, but they're more appropriate, I think, at the end of this discussion, so maybe just before or after the council acts on this, I could have the floor for just two minutes again.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Eva Kelly? Eva, go ahead.
Hi, Christine, thanks, this is Eva. I was just, uh, I was just gonna call and say if you could let David speak again, but he figured out how to raise his hand a second time, so I don't have a comment, thanks.
Thank you. I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Is there a consensus with the, the council to go ahead and move ahead with the, uh, Commissioner Stevens, and then to, uh, at the next meeting approve, revising the, to three members at large from the public?
Mr. Mayor, before we go to consensus, could, I think David wanted two minutes to speak-
I think he wanted us to decide first and then go ahead, consensus, or go to, back to him?
Is that a roll call vote?
No, this, uh, it's consensus on this item, sir.
I agree. Agree.
Agree.
Okay, let's bring back Mr. Early.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to mention two things. One, since we have many people's attention right now regarding general plan items, I wanted to mention that there are two upcoming public workshops, that will be virtual workshops, and those are on March 9th and 10th. Um, staff may better be able to give the exact times than I, the formal announcements aren't out yet, but you can look for those and register for them on Zoom, and we would love to see a large number, number of members of the public, um, appear at those, so, uh, maybe when I'm done, staff could just mention those times of day. Um, and then I just, my other item was, I wanted to clarify both with the council members and the city clerk, whether it will be possible and appropriate for us to start advertising these three GPAC positions via Facebook as soon as tomorrow, even though I understand that the newspaper advertisement won't appear until February 26th. We, we are ready to advertise those if it's appropriate from the perspective of both the council and the city clerk.
Yeah, we could do that, with the current resolution, it's one, so that, that gives us a, a reason, and we can say with anticipated, uh, resolution, possibly changing it to three, uh, we, we should be able to get that advertisement out as soon as possible.
Could we add air for commissions to that?
Okay, thank you very much. Those were my two items. I don't know if Eva or Amber or Abraham can just say the times of day of those me-, upcoming, um, public meetings for the general plan?
Hi, yes, um, they are going to be 9:00 AM on March 9th and 6:00 PM on March 10th. I'm almost certain. I, it's definitely the 9th and 10th, definitely in the morning and the evening. I believe it is, it's 9:00 on the 9th and then 6:00 PM on the 10th, but we will get those out to everyone who has signed up for our email list and post on our Instagram and our Facebook for the general plan, as soon as we have those confirmed.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
No, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. We're gonna now move on to G4.
Good evening, council members, I'm Tina Garza, a recreation supervisor. Um, before you, is a report that I'll give, um, just a department summary, very quickly, is in April of 2018, the city council of the city of Hollister directed staff to release an RFQ to complete the design plans for the Brigantino Park Water Reclamation Recreation Facility. Um, staff completed that on October 8th of 2018 and recommended that we contract, um, with Kim Lee Horn and associate, associates. And at a special meeting on March 25th, 2019, the city council reviewed the park's facility master plan update, along with the concept plan for the Brigantino Park Water Reclamation Recreation Facility. And then, in April of 2019, city council directed staff to incorporate the concept for the Brigantino Park Water Reclamation Recreation Facility presented, um, that was presented on March 25th of 2019. Um, and then, the city council of the city of Hollister approved Resolution 2019, um, 112, which was the park facility master plan on May 20th, 2019. Um, staff is recommending council provide direction. Um, and then, the next is a report from Kim Lee Horn and associates on the Brigantino Park, the Water Reclamation, um, facility.
Real quick, Mayor, before we go any further, it does say Brigantino Park, but it is the Water Reclamation Spri-, uh, Park, not, it has not been named yet.
Thank you. Questions from council? Tina, I do have a question for you. Um, part of this planning was to get to the point, uh, before we got too far into this, winning a, um, a grant to pay for this, it was a very expensive project. Whatever happened with that, because I haven't heard anything in a while, and without the funding, this is just not very realistic, so wh- where are we at with that before we keep going down this path?
Uh, from my understanding, the staff, uh, the city was not awarded the grant, and I, from here, I'm not sure about a lot of information, um, that- And I, from here, I'm not sure about a lot of information that fell under previous employees.
Yeah, just because I, again, it was a, what was a dollar on this thing? The total cost on this park, do you remember Tina?
For the full development?
Yeah.
Full, everything that we have in this presentation, thirty-five million.
Yeah, so it was a, it was totally depended on whether we can get that grant or not. And I did not, I don't remember getting the update that we did not win the grant. But I, well, go ahead with the presentation. I was just gonna say, I'm getting a lot of requests from the public to, at least a lot of soccer teams out there that are trying to use the area to practice and play and they like to get some soccer fields going out there and maybe help create those fields if they can to at least start using this. I don't see thirty-five million coming out if we don't have a grant for it.
I think that if we focus, because there's also a need for the softball, baseball community that like to use the fields. Maybe if we can try to work on something where there's fields, softball fields, baseball fields and soccer fields. And then maybe not include some of all the other amenities that were added to that. Cause I know there was water park, amphitheaters and other sorts of different types of ideas that staff put in there.
Yeah, of course, there's, there's always room for as much as we can, that's what we talked about before. But if we can figure out a way to at least get something that's affordable, get it going with the public, maybe the soccer fields are some of the easiest things we can start with.
Yes, Mayor, I think that's what staff's kind of looking for is some, maybe some general direction from, from council as what they would like to see out there or we start moving forward. I think we have a split community with softball, baseball and/or, and then with the soccer. So we're just kinda, where do you want staff to spend their time on looking forward?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Resendez.
Thank you. Yeah, as I recall, I think it was like seven hundred and fifty thousand just to draw up the plans that was sitting on a shelf. And, and I think I had this, this conversation with the old city manager. It was just sitting on a shelf and then we really didn't have the money still. It wasn't a very practical plan, right? I think we had talked about putting in different phases and stuff. I think that's a good idea is just to scale back a little bit. Let's focus on making it more of sports related. And I think that by doing that, we can also bring in some, some tours. You know, we can generate some other revenue. I know that we had looked at probably another part of the city to do this, but that didn't work out. So I think that we can probably scale back, look at, I know you're passionate about and you've got some connections in the softball industry, Ms. Garza. I know that it's, there's a lot of people that want to do soccer, maybe even potentially a football field. There's lots of space out there and it'll really give the kids locally something to do if we can do this right. But I do remember this and it's just been sitting there, nothing got done. And I'm sad to hear that we didn't get the grant, but we have to be practical. We, we've got to do something with this park for sure.
Any other comments from council?
Mayor Velazquez, Tim Burns.
Mr. Burns?
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. So I'm, I'm excited even by the potential of this eventually being built out and I would love to see it done in phases. Knowing the great news we just heard about the new hotel coming, I would absolutely like to see maybe some collaboration with economic development. Or, you know, whether it be the San Benito Chamber or the Hollister Downtown Association to see how we can better and more effectively promote athletic events, whether it be softball tournaments and, and things of that nature. But I'd also like to maybe see us take another run at a grant or some partial grant funding and, and maybe do some exploratory research, some grant mining to, to see what's out there. Because maybe we can't get thirty million dollars, but maybe we, maybe we take little bites of this project and whatever we can fund through grants, you know, parks and recreation are very important to our community. And so I, I'm, I'm very inspired by what I've heard even tonight, even though I too am disappointed that we didn't get the, the, the big grant. But I'd like to explore more opportunities there and, and see where that can take us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from council?
I'd like to chime in. I, I think that's a, a great idea also, especially if we can come up with a strategy is like, I don't know, just from my limited planning is, you know, even starting at the back of the park and working our way forward, which, um, I don't know, coming up with a plan, putting in our roads and parking lot and working for, and working outward makes, there's, there's so much to this park. It's, it's, I hate to see this just die or be pushed farther back. I'd like to see an active grant. What would you say, what'd you say, mining, grant mining? I love his terms. But yeah, this is too beautiful and it's like, it's refreshing and I can hear the kids laughing and playing and, and already. So that's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Resendez.
Mr. Councilman, everyone's giving an idea too. I think if we can look at the private industry, Ms. Garza, I know that they sponsor like sports parks and stuff. Like, you know, even Target or, you know, there's somebody that might want to come over here and, and help us out to build a sports park or something. So I wouldn't just limit ourselves to grants, like see what's out there as far as the private industry and what kind of sponsorships they have available for this type of industry. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Maybe, city manager, maybe you could help with this. How much funding do we have that could be used at this facility currently?
I, I believe we have approximately two million dollars, but I, I can get that information for all council members.
So conceivably, if we can get people together to help out and we can get two million dollars in materials to kind of do different things. I, I think the community is really ready to go and try to get something going here. I think all the ideas mentioned were great ideas, continuing to look for grants. But let's, let's start moving. We can do a lot with two million if we structure it right. I would say maybe we can get some help from Kim Lee Horn to lay out some of the, maybe starting again with something that's the most affordable part of this, I think we could do with the soccer fields that, I think with some grading and some simple work, of course irrigation system, that we could probably get going on something to get this park in use. And maybe even a football field at the same time. A lot of our kids are obviously into football and of course soccer. And then we can move it towards the, some of the more expensive projects that cost more dollars. But maybe we can get some help there with some layouts and understanding what we can do with how we can use the two million dollars. And as was pointed out by Vice Mayor Resendez, that some of the businesses in town, are they willing to sponsor some of the different areas, different fields that we can work with them on to, to get things going? I mean, again, it's, I know we're all disappointed. Again, I didn't remember hearing about not winning the grant, but doesn't mean we can't do something. And I'm sure, sounds like everybody's motivated to get something done here. So that's good news and I think we can do it together.
I, I have a quick question for the city manager.
Go ahead, sir.
The, the two million, is that the total park fund or is that just, that can go to this park?
It's, it'll be total park fund, but.
So then if we put that two million towards this, that would put everything else on hold.
Correct.
And we could always work around that. I mean, obviously if that takes all the money, we don't want to, we want to make sure we fix up the parks as we talked about in, in the past. But just to get an idea of ballpark, some numbers out there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get that number out to everybody tomorrow.
Yeah, and then we could all work on it together and come up with some ideas. And Mr. Perez, you, you're bringing up a good point because as we talked about in the past, we were supposed to upgrade all the parks for the handicap accessible. And we need to be looking at, at that along with some of this, some of this work. So, any other comments or questions from the council?
Just while we're on, on that point, if we are any, I'm sure we're getting closer and closer every day from getting a list of parks in order, a list of the order of parks that we're going to be working on. So we can have a bigger, a better, bigger picture of where we're going.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Councilman Perez, we were kind of asking Tina if she wanted to do her presentation.
I'm sorry.
So she probably missed that. So it probably would help if Tina did her presentation real quick and then we could probably answer some more questions.
Go ahead.
What we have here is a presentation from Kim Lee Horn and associates. If we can get them on, are they, Michael and Chris? They, they do, they did break it down in different, in phases, kind of what you guys were recommending, what council was recommending. So if they can make that presentation, you'll have some ideas and then receive direction from there.
Yeah, hey, everyone, this is Michael Madsen, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, thanks Tina for the intro and good evening, Mayor and city council members. As I said, my name is Michael Madsen, I'm a landscape architect with Kim Lee Horn. And also on the call are two others of members of the landscape architecture team, Matthew Morgan and Chris Frye. Thanks for the invitation to join you all tonight. I wanted to provide a quick update on the design. As you guys have been talking about, there's quite the history here. So Tina, you talked a little bit about how things got started back in June of twenty seventeen, where public meetings began to discuss the development of Brigantino Park. And then we came on board in October of twenty eighteen. Is there anyone that could advance the slides for?
That would be me.
Let's see. I'm wondering if you hit close on that bar there, that toolbar? If it allows you to go up and then click on view and do full screen mode perhaps?
It won't allow the full screen view.
Right?
Okay. Just keep going.
All right, we'll work with it. So yeah, this is a quick list of our, our full team here. So you can see we've got lots of landscape architects and civil engineers. And we do have somebody that specializes in grants. I know that that's obviously a big discussion and we'll talk a little bit more about that tonight if you could advance the next slide. So this is what I was talking about, a little bit of the project history. You all know the site pretty well, I'm assuming. And it's not easily accessible right now by your community unless you come by car. So that's one of the things that we believe in some of our research that is sort of keeping it. It's making it more difficult to capture those grant opportunities because a lot of them have requirements for direct access into communities by, by foot or by bike. And right now there aren't some of the programming elements implemented into the park that would really, you know, I guess, get that development, those connections made. So we're looking to lay out a plan that, like you all said, can be developed in phases. So I'll talk you through that a little bit more if you could advance the next slide. And project history, so you'll see over on the right-hand side, there are some sketches that came from that twenty seventeen meeting that, that involved the public and a lot of folks talked about the priorities being maintaining the park's natural character, communal use and special events. Next slide, please. And then the previous consultant that you all had on board came up with this concept. And we looked at this during our interview process. We looked at the topography, we looked at the views on site. We talked to facilities, staff to understand their needs for housing of equipment and things. And you'll see how this concept has evolved a little bit as we've come into the picture. Next slide, please. So initial steps, as, as you said, we won the contract, had the opportunity to meet with many of you and we conducted a sidewalk in early twenty eighteen. And we had several follow-up calls where we talked about the, the real goals dug into those operation and maintenance needs, opportunities for connectivity and recreational objectives. So out of those conversations came a couple of concepts that really highlighted different ways to look at the site to maximize parking, maximize accessibility from the public and, and really tried to understand our goal here is there are so many potential programs that can happen across the site. How can we best set up the site so that we can have multiple things happening at once? You know, many of you mentioned soccer, football, softball, play areas for, for families. Perhaps a water park, that's definitely been something that we've, we've been talking about with the previous director that we were working with. So let's see if we could go to the next slide, please. And so this master plan concept kept evolving and we really, you know, honed in on these goals and objectives. So making it a community destination, really trying to think of this as a way to put Hollister on the map. As you said, it will bring in revenue for your, for your community and it will also attract folks from outside your community to bring in tournaments and things like that. Promoting connectivity to the adjacent neighborhoods. Hopefully finding ways to do that with potential connections where they allow and encourage pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic and things like that. But also really respecting what's there, maximizing the view sheds, making sure that parking is distributed in a way that's sensitive to the topography, separating the uses in a way that's safe for the, the community. And then having flexibility amongst the programming. If you could go to the next slide, please. So as you can see on the right, the, the master plan concept that we've come up with, it, it's evolved a little bit from the other plan where we have parking really on one side of the park to make it so that once you park your car and you're in the park, you are free to roam and you're not going to have an interruption from the vehicle. We felt that that was very important. And the, this concept has evolved even more than this and you'll see that coming up. But you'll see here, the, the proposed park amenities that ones that we really wanted to try to introduce to this space, four softball fields, a playground, splash pad, basketball, soccer, an open event lawn, a community meeting space, and of course, city of Hollister maintenance offices and storage. Next slide, please. So we talked a lot about funding options tonight, I heard you all speaking of that. So grants, that is definitely something that even though that first grant did not come through, those grants come back time and again. So the more we develop this plan and show the potential for this, for this space, the more we have to show to the potential committee that is going to be awarding the grant money. So we're really excited to be here talking to you all, working with you guys to keep advancing this plan so that we can use this and really show the potential that this space has to bring in the community, to bring in folks from outside of the community and to really be a space for young kids to, to play and be active and to open up educational opportunities for, for all of this area. And part of that is not only how do we fund building this, but how do we keep the funds coming in to maintain it? So we talked a lot about things with Tina and staff about creating spaces that can be rented for different events, for different games. And to really think about these new revenue streams that are possible with some of the programming that we introduce. Next slide, please. And I heard you all talk about phasing and I'm really glad because we realized this is a big part to take on in, you know, one big effort. So we'll show you in the next couple of slides how we consider to break it out. But some of the things that you want to think about when you're thinking about how this could be broken out, think about the main elements like, you know, just down to basics such as parking. We need that dedicated parking to provide safe spaces for people to come, get their things out and prepare to play a game or to meet up with other friends and neighbors. The softball fields we see is kind of a, a great thing to start with. Because there, from what we understand, you are already renting other facilities for some softball games. So there's a potential savings here by not renting other facilities for your games. And then there's potential revenue from hosting tournaments, rentals and things of the space like that. And the same thing can go on as you move into the next phases for soccer, expanding the offerings for that field. And it doesn't just have to be a soccer game, it can be a multi-purpose striped field. The playground area is a great space for parents to come entertain, entertain their kids at very low cost, meet their neighbors, network, the splash pad too, a great thing to put Hollister on the map and bring in folks from all areas around you. And then of course, the open spaces and trails, we've definitely seen that those are important to your community. And then we met with an architect and with city staff and walked your different maintenance yards, looked at your different, the different tools and equipment that you have. And what you're seeing here on the screen, these things are scaled as they And what you're seeing here on the screen, these things are scaled as they should be to, to house those elements. And they take all of that into consideration. Let's see if we could move on to the next slide. So here's the next evolution of the project. And you'll see in the upper right-hand corner that we kind of thought about, okay, maybe this is the order of operations to phase things. So if we just scroll to the next slide, these, the following slides are going to break things up and, and kind of focus on what areas, when we say, you know, phase one, how that would look, what that would look like. So you can see here, phase one talks about developing two of the softball fields, having terrace seating for the softball fields, paving, amenity buildings with restrooms, open space for activities. So really we focused on the things that are going to build the foundation for a park to evolve over time. And if you scroll a little bit to the bottom of the screen, it, we also include pricing along with each one of these slides that shows you what each one of these phases might look like. So let's see, if you move on to the next slide, you'll see. So this is just entry parking amenities. So if you think about, if we were to do phase one, start to draw a crowd and as more crowds are growing, you know, really getting some signage out there. You know, giving that some curb appeal so that people know where they're, where they're headed and they really know where they've got to go when they're heading to this park. See the next slide, please. And then, so south parking lot amenities, doesn't sound so luxurious or exciting, but adding on that second parking lot, providing further access into the community that will become this park. If we keep going to the next slide. And then looking at the south softball field amenities, making sure that we've kind of, again, building upon that stage that we've set. We've got all the good bones in, we've got parking, irrigation, we've got lots of pathways and things for folks. And then we're just adding on incrementally as the funds, as the funds come, come, come up. See if we can go to the next slide, please. And then you'll see the, the soccer field amenities. And we're just working our way back into the park. On the next slide. So this is the second soccer field amenity. And the prices that you're seeing, you know, there is a lot, we've got spreadsheets, drawings, lots of things that back up these prices. So things that you may not, you know, come to mind right away that we know that there are rodent issues out there. And so incorporating how we build these fields, how we construct these things to account for maintenance challenges and ongoing things. We wanted to provide very conservative estimates to really hone in on, you know, this is potentially what this looks at, or what you're looking at in terms of price. And what we, where we're instructed to do by staff was basically to, you know, shoot for the moon, give the ultimate design here. Make sure that we're master planning that and working through those phases and then we can scale back as needed. We can change up the design as needed, but we wanted to start breaking these things out into different phases so we could see how things were falling together and coming together in line. Next slide, please. And then amphitheater amenities. So one of the things that was talked about a lot is how do we activate this space in other ways that doesn't, you know, that don't include sports? So there was always an idea for an amphitheater tying that into some of the passive areas around this. And, and basically just being a space where you could come over on a bike, meet up with your bike club and then head out on some of the bike trails in the community or come see a movie in an afternoon or an evening with the rest of the neighbors, things like that. Next slide, please. And then going back up to the front, we have all of these elements that are now, you know, generating revenue for the community, bringing lots of things in, attracting lots of folks. And we have the opportunity now to really spend some dollars on the things that are going to really excite your community and make them come back day after day. So some of those things being the playground and the splash pad and the tennis courts. Those may not always be the revenue generating things, so we put that towards the end of the phasing. But again, something that, that I know you all were excited about, so we wanted to make sure we accounted for that. Next slide, please. So just to give you an update of where we are, we've worked our plans all the way through about 75%. And we've done engineering, grading, we've looked at the topography. And we've really tried to understand how the, you know, we're set up here by the park land. And we're trying to take the best approach to, you know, not harm this land, to really respect this land and also really build in all of the different opportunities and programming that we think the community is going to love and that we hear from the community that you're looking for. So in the end of the day, you have a space that's constantly activated because you have a variety of activities and things to engage in. So from here, we'll be moving into 90% plans, 100% plans after that. And then again, we'll concurrently be working with your staff on grants. We really like the idea that you just mentioned too, to, to work with private donors. We definitely have some connections with other clients, retail, commercial clients that I know we could speak of or speak to immediately. I was just talking with Matthew and Chris about that when you mentioned that. We can take another look at the phasing and dial things in and, you know, fine tune things. But wanted to at least give you an update of where we are as it's been two years since we've been in front of you guys. So appreciate your time and yeah, let me know if you have any questions. We'd be happy to, to answer them.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any questions from council?
I do for staff.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. City Manager, he brought up a great point about like safe access to the park. Where are we at with Apricot Trail and the bridge?
Apricot Trail, should be finished in March. The bridge, that was always just a proposed bridge. I believe it because the cost of building that bridge is, would add quite a bit more to the cost of this project.
Okay, so that's not realistic at this time. Okay. Just a couple of quick things. I like, I think that this park has the potential to generate revenue and a lot of parks don't, right? So I think that we need to focus on that. And that's something our city's lacking, other cities have. I like the, the multi, the multi-use for the fields, like if we can do like soccer and lacrosse and football. I think that'll bring in revenue right away off the bat. So I would consider phasing that in first so that we can start using that. And then I just, you know, it's been two years and I, I just think that some of the staff's not here, the council members are not here. I just think that we should prioritize this. I'd love to see it with this current council, like I'd love to see this come to fruition. Because if not, I think in another couple of years, there might be different people, different staff, and we're just going to see this go on and on. So I'm pretty excited. I think that there's a lot of potential there and I'm sad to hear about the bridge. I thought, for some reason, I thought we had that funded.
I have a question.
Councilmember Perez?
And I guess this would be more towards staff or whoever can answer this. So on, on San Juan Road, I mean, David brought up about accessibility and stuff and it's great, the parking lot, but how do we get kids over there? Do we have plans for San Juan Road to cross the bridge? I mean, are we going to create a park? I mean, it's a great park, don't get me wrong. I just think we also need to focus on how we're going to get kids riding their bicycles to this place. Because they are going to ride their bikes to this place, I would. And crossing that, that bridge on San Juan Road is dangerous. So we also have, I think there's another aspect we have to add into there. And I like the, the part that David was saying about, you know, that you guys are going to help us to, let's write some grants. Oh, that David's going to write, help us? David's going to do it all, no. That David, you're going to, your company's going to help us with writing some grants. And a couple of good points about the maintaining it. You know, what's, how are we going to do that? These are just questions that I, hopefully we can come up with answers because this is a beautiful idea. So did, so is everybody able to hear me when I was talking about how we're going to get people there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we would have to add in future proposed plans.
One more question. So how much is all this costing us just to get these plans?
I'm not sure in that total. I can come back and provide that information for you. Yes, this was, worked, a previous employee worked on this one and I just kind of brought it back just to get some conversation starting on this project.
Well, you started a good conversation.
Thank you.
And real quick, Mayor, just to answer earlier question, how much was in the park impact fee? We will probably finish the year at about $2.8 million.
Thank you. Helpful to understand.
And am I able to make one more comment on the connectivity and, you know, accessing it by bike or by, by foot? I think one of the things that we really should focus on and, and I'm making a note of it. When we're, when we're thinking about grants, there are certain like urban greening grants that really look at connectivity to green space, whether it's through mass transit or by bike trails or walking trails, jogging trails. So I think that perhaps if we can start with an initial grant to help make a connection and we establish that and we have that connection, then that's going to open the door up for lots of other grants that we can apply for. So I think it's being strategic about the grants we go after as we phase and, and develop this plan. But I, I do think there's a way and I just think we need to be very disciplined and, and strategic in how we do that. So Tina, I'll follow up with you, but I'm going to pull in one of our, one of the people that really heads up grant research at, at Kim Lee Horn and see if we can get a call with you to, to think about a strategy for this.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council members?
Mayor Velasquez, Tim Burns.
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, sir. I was curious if this has been already shared with our Parks and Rec Commission? And if not, I'd like that this presentation be provided to them as well. I think it'd be a valuable resource to get their input also. And then I'm also curious if we've done any kind of an assessment as we move forward in this project, what it's going to require for city staff. And, and I think, you know, if we're talking about phasing in, are we going to need to bring more Parks and Rec people on? We're going to need to bring more custodial staff, irrigation, gardeners, that kind of stuff too. And I think that would be helpful because at some point, when this comes to fruition, I think, you know, it's, it's going to be an amazing resource and we need to be good stewards of it. So I'd like to see the city staff start to have that thought process as well. So that when it comes time to, to make this happen, that we have the people and we're not scrambling and we can budget accordingly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments, questions?
So I do have a few comments and I think we all, of course, can, can love the, the design and the ideas here. But it's going to come back to dollars as we, as we got here in the first place is, we had a good dream, but no dollars to, to fund a dream. I think Mr. Perez is making an excellent point. And, you know, we have a park. How do, how are we getting kids over there? It's a, crossing that bridge, I wouldn't let my kids cross that bridge, that's, that's for sure. It's a, quite dangerous. But be going beyond that, I'm going to go back to the percentage of it being done. I, I get we're at 70 something percent, but I would almost say hold off a bit only for this reason. I would say, how do we make use of something now? With, we're here in 2.8 million, so say we get 2 million. How do we, how do we make use of some of this open land before we talk about really expensive projects? How do we make use of it? How do we, we talked about this, the big interest in soccer. How many soccer fields could actually go there? Not that they had to be permanent, but at least temporary for a while as we build up towards this other big plan. On the upper shelf, for an example, different sizes, there's the larger size, the kid-sized fields for tournaments. And I've heard numbers of, you need eight fields for, to bring tournaments in for soccer. How much revenue would that bring? How much revenue would it bring for the softball fields? What, what are the numbers so we can understand it and maintain it? And the, the point was made, Michael, I guess you've seen all the gopher holes out there. So the rodent issue, do we handle that with? How do we handle it? Do we put more owl boxes up there? Will that help offset some of that problem? Is there other ways to do it, but that aren't incredibly expensive? We just went through this with the dog park and it ended up costing quite a bit of money. And it's taken quite a bit of time just to get that, that park done. How, in other words, what I'm trying to say is, how do we get this field active in the next year, year and a half? Rather than waiting for the, you know, even, even if we're staging it, we're looking at seven, I think some of the first stages were seven, eight million plus. So how do we, in a temporary basis, start working with the community to get this thing active for them? Because right now I see a lot of kids going out, a lot of teams that are going out there practicing both soccer and football teams going out there. How do we make use of this land without having to reshape this right now? And, and get it to use as we keep working towards increasing the, those budgets to get the ultimate dream out of this situation? So in other words, how do we, how do we deliver to the community in the next year, year and a half rather than have this conversation two years, four years again because of the funding issues? Where can we start? How do we start with the, some of these local clubs to get their participation and get the businesses in so we can get something moving here sooner rather than later?
Yeah, it's a, it's a really good question. I, I, I think what, I, what comes to mind is maybe just having an initial meeting with Tina and, and staff and really understanding, you know, what organizations there are in the community that want to get out there. And, and really understanding, okay, if we can find areas, identify areas that can be used currently that, you know, we can phase around that so that there are potential areas that can be active while some construction's happening and while we're introducing activities to the park. I, I think there's many ways you can come at it. I think, you know, the, the gopher issue again, that's something that we can work at solving through the design and through the construction of the new phases and everything. But I, I think really understanding if that is the priority, it's sort of tackling it concurrently. Let's activate the space and let's build it out. I think it would be good to just take a step back and understand, okay, who are the users? What type of crowds? What type of numbers are we talking? You know, is there enough space for people to currently go there if we're going to start to introduce these types of events? Is there parking? Is there bus drop-off? One of the things that might need to be, you know, priority number one for a construction effort that can be considered in the overall long-term design and, you know, tackled right now with some of the dollars that you have. So that we're not having to build something and then tear it down and redo it, but that we're building it with that long-term goal in mind. Because that's, it sounds like that's what you're, what you're saying is, this seems like a far-off goal and how can we jump into it?
And we just have to be realistic and I, I see what you're saying. I think stepping back, understanding our customers, you know, who are those customers? Are, were there residents? And what kind of activity is there? Is there a need for six soccer fields, eight soccer fields, two soccer fields, two softball fields, four? What, what is the real need based on existing teams here locally? And, you know, get a better understanding before we move too far forward on this. Because thinking money and if we can't accomplish it in the end, we, we really have done nothing for our community.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think the design that we have now, the, the layout of the fields, the number of the fields, that came from many meetings that we've had with staff, many meetings that I, from what I understand that they've had with the community. So for what I, what we presented today, I feel pretty confident that that is going to meet the needs of your community. I'm just wondering if right now in the interim, if you're wanting to activate that space as we move towards that long-term goal, that we find the things that I guess are going to be the most fruitful for the community in terms of, is it soccer? Is it softball? Is it both? How can we set up some temporary fields there? And perhaps some temporary facilities to get some of that energy going? Because I think also if you're able to activate the space and show, for example, a private company, you know, hey, we're getting a lot of folks out here, you all may want to take an opportunity to, to advertise or to sponsor a team or You know, hey, we're getting a lot of folks out here. You all may want to take an opportunity to, to advertise or to sponsor a team or to sponsor a game. You know, you're, you're actually going to show them what it has the potential to become. Other than just the drawings that we present. So I think that there's a lot of value in, in potentially. Going at things from both angles, but yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and schedule something with Tina so we can kind of brainstorm on this. Hopefully I'm, I'm speaking to it correctly.
Yeah, and I think that would be helpful because it really would give us all a better understanding and come back and, okay, let's, let's attack this. But, you know, we're, we're definitely going to always come back to that question of crossing that bridge. Because we can't get our kids out there. We really haven't accomplished much. So. Any other input from, from council? Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Elias Salinas.
Thank you. So first off, I appreciate and thank you very much for the, for the presentation. And for offering to write grants, but writing grants is really expensive. So obviously you're not going to do this for free. And I know we have city staff that writes grants, so I would, I would really rather. Have the city take care of that instead of you offering. And again, that's great. But I think we only have so much money and, and it really costs a lot of money for just one grant. And you, and I realize that you claim to have access, you know, to, to people that might be able to, you know, to help and whatever. But this is really expensive. We don't have a lot of money and this park has been in the, in the, in the thoughts for quite some time. And I know Mayor Ignacio and Supervisor Peter Hernandez. And Supervisor Dela Cruz at one time went out to the Central Valley and I think up to Sunnyvale. And you visited different, different parks. And I think you may have also, correct me if I'm wrong, did you also go to Morgan Hill to see the soccer fields? So we, we have, the city staff has an idea of what it is that they want to bring here. And I think it's a great idea. I had a, you know, I was an athlete myself and participated in tournaments. My son was an athlete and we participated in terms. So there is revenue to be made. And it, it would bring a lot of people, but of course, as Supervisor, you know, Councilman Perez said and the mayor has said. How are you going to get the kids over to the park? I mean. I would never allow my son to get on a bike and go over there. It's a dangerous road. So it, it is important. I know that there's a plan for the river Parkway and stuff like that, but that's, that's a long ways off. And two million dollars to build something, if that's not what we have right now, that's nothing. And it's going to get really, you know, it's, it's going to go quickly. And that two million dollars, is that part of the money that's being used to pay? For this consulting company? So I'll thank you so much for speaking. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I think what I heard is the consultant, Michael, you're going to want to meet up with Tina again and have some more conversations. Maybe again, get a better understanding of what we can do. The, the demand needs from the local teams here or those that would use the park. And then kind of come back, maybe give us a, an update?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think that that is the plan. And just to clarify. When I, when I said that we have someone that specializes in grants, it's not that she writes grants. She just knows how to find them and mine them. So I was hoping to lean on her to help connect the city staff for those opportunities. And, you know, help with any tips that, that she can provide on how to capture those grants and bring them home. Whether it's, you know, the certain way we do the graphics or present the story. Or, you know, the prioritization, like you all are talking about this connection to the community. So absolutely hear you loud and clear. I know that the budget is a challenge and it's definitely in our best interest to help you guys find this funding. As this park, as we've been working on it for a while, you know, we definitely are excited about it. We love the impact that it has the potential to make on your community. And so we want to help you guys make it happen. So. But yeah, we'll do a follow-up meeting and I'd be happy to, to come back and support Tina and updating, updating you all.
Great. Is the council okay with that?
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Let's go ahead and move now to item G five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, we have five members on the youth committee. One of those members, Alexander Johnson, will be. Termining out in March, next month of 2021. We have received one application from Robinson Johnson. And if we could ratify his appointment tonight, we would continue to have a full quorum with no interruptions in March.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Okay. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to say I wish all the commissions were like this. Just saying.
Good job, youth.
Thank you. Is there a consensus amongst the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Perfect. There you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to go now to item K one.
Jamila, go ahead.
Thank you. I saw the notice on my phone. Good evening, council members. This is Jamila Saka, the Housing Programs Coordinator. For the City of Hollister and San Benito County. Tonight I have an annual report. This is a report regarding our low and moderate income housing asset fund. And for some of the newer council members, just to let you know, this is a part of an annual fund that has to deal with our redevelopment agency. So as you may or may not know, the redevelopment agency was ended by the state of California in 2012. Part of that is an expectation that we continue to. Highlight and be able to keep transparent how much money is available in this fund. And what we have used it for in the past, present, and what we intend to use it for in the future. So this is something that you will expect to see every year about this time. This report is also used for the general plan progress report that our planning department will be providing in the next month or so. I don't have anything specific to highlight in the report, but if there are any questions or comments, I can be able to take that at this time.
If you have any questions or comments from council?
I have one.
Go ahead, sir.
Ms. Jamila, last time you were here, I think we were talking about getting a grant. Did we get that grant? And then you were going to start a process as far as hiring a consultant? And I forget, you can probably remind me of the details. Where are we at with that?
Okay, the, those grants will be a little bit separate from this housing asset fund. So that will not necessarily tie into any reports related to this one specifically, just to let. You know, and to let any members of the public know as well. So in regards to which I believe you're speaking about is our SB two grant. We were finally received our standard agreement from the state of California. And at this time, the city staff and myself are working on updating the request for proposal. So as part of that grant, it included not just focusing on potentially an inclusionary housing ordinance. But it also focuses focused on zoning code updates along with an update to our accessory dwelling unit program. So we're first going to focus on updating our zoning code and creating and developing our assess. Creating and developing our accessory unit program so that those two can target some. Advantages and just basically some focus from the state, especially we do need to update our code. So it reflects most. Updated information from the state regarding our accessory dwelling units. So I'm hoping in the next couple of months, we can be able to complete those RFPs. And then at that time, once those two are at least in the works and I can be able to focus more on the inclusionary housing ordinance. I think the, the focus should be at least the first two regarding the zoning code ordinance update. And the accessory dwelling unit program, because those will kind of tie into the inclusionary program. So if those two are set and moving forward, then we can be able to focus on the inclusionary housing ordinance. I, I, I hope that answered the question.
Yeah, I think I got off topic. I apologize, but yeah, if we can get a report back from that soon, that would be nice, but sounds like you do. Thank you.
Yeah, I can definitely provide that as we progress. I am waiting on a couple. Of standard agreements from the state regarding a couple of the other grants we applied for. We have received confirmation that like it's moving forward. So I think what I would like to do is have it a, a presentation when we have like confirmation of all of them. Just so I'm not creating any too much confusion regarding it, but I can definitely bring something back next meeting. But just so the current council knows, those grants are greatly separate from this report tonight.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you. I was going to ask kind of the same thing. We, we talked over a year ago. About the affordable housing, inclusionary housing and, you know, hundreds of homes are being built a year. We still don't have a policy on this to require that of builders and really it's hurting our community. A lot of our community cannot afford seven hundred thousand dollar homes. So we need to get this policy into place. If we talked about at that meeting, Morgan Hill had a very good policy in place. And not that we had to recreate anything, we just need to get a policy in place. And I know that's probably not this part of it, but maybe a city manager, we can, we have to move aggressively. We put this off way too long, too many years, and we need a policy in place quickly. And that to me actually is one of the priorities because again, our own residents can't live here, can't afford it. And we've done nothing to change that. And it really is a critical, we're at a critical juncture here. That we need to have fifteen to seventeen percent of these developments have affordable housing. Because we're just, we're sending our own residents away and this, we can't, we can't accept it any longer. So maybe a city manager, if you can agendize that and have a conversation about it so we move forward on this.
Yeah, Abraham and I locked eyes, so we will work on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from council? Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And again, thank you for your report.
Of course. Have a, have a great evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now move to, oh, adjourn in the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Say that again really loud.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, we're supposed to do roll call, but we'll accept that this time. Thank you, guys.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you for staying with us.
Paul, quick question if you can hear me.
Can you still hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Paul. Whatever you did for the microphones during the park discussion was really helpful.